Okay.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 7th, 2020 City Council meeting. Please call the roll, Linda.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Sorsa?
Yes.
Fire State for all.
Yes.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today's prayer will be given by Paul Brown, City Attorney.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we're thankful that we can come to you with our needs, and we have a great need. We have a pandemic, and we pray for healing. We pray for healing around the world. We pray for protection for our healthcare workers who are trying to meet the need as well. Lord, we pray for our leaders, federal, state, and local, as they all deal with this problem that continues for some time. So we seek your face, we seek your guidance, we seek your wisdom. Lord, we're thankful that we can come to you with our needs. The Lord, you've already met our greatest need, which is salvation. Lord, we thank you as we celebrate this Sunday, the resurrection of your Son. Thank you for providing life for us through Jesus Christ. It's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
We will move to item six, consent agenda.
Okay, before we move to item six, I did want to mention that we do have four proclamations that we won't be presenting in person today. I'll be signing those and sending those off. Those are for Apollo 13 Day, the week of the young child, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and National Public Safety Tell Communicators Week. Then we wish to express our sincere gratitude to the organizations that support those efforts, especially considering what we've heard about an increase in domestic and child abuse with this national crisis and all the stress involved in the loss of jobs. And our heart goes out to people dealing with those stressors and really encourage everybody to reach out to those young families and support people in the best way that you can. So yes, thank you for that, Linda. And then moving on to the consent agenda, are there questions or a motion?
My question is, I know with the Emancipation Day Hutchinson Municipal Band and the Hutchinson Symphony, I know in the contract it says if we're expected to have any revenue decrease that... I just didn't know if any of that's been discussed about whether the allocation's going to be less this year due to what everything's going on.
Yeah, I think John can address that.
Yeah, City Manager John Deirdre. We have not had that conversation with those, any of those funding groups yet. That is a standard piece of language that's been in those agreements forever. And I remember way back when, when I was assisting here, we incorporated a lot of that. We've never had to invoke that, but you know, we're going to talk later today about some of our financial positions and where we're headed. And some of these amounts are, you know, fairly, you know, fairly small. But that has not been discussed with any of these groups.
Okay. That's my only question.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second further discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Sorsa?
Yes.
Fire State for all.
Yes, next item, please.
Item 7A, consider amendment to the down payment match incentive program.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the council. I hope everybody is well and healthy. This morning, I am bringing you some exciting amendment to our down payment match assistance program. I think most everyone's familiar with this, but this is one of the sets of programs that the city invested in back in 2017. Back in 2017, the city invested in about $70,000 towards housing programs within the city. And of that $70,000, this down payment match assistance program was allocated for $35,000. This is for featured areas, neighborhoods that are south of 17th Avenue. We have approximately $17,371 remaining in it, and this program is administered by Interfaith Housing and Community Services. So really kind of get into a little bit of what the qualifications are of it and then what the proposed amendment is. So this is a 60-40 match program, so potential homeowners need to bring 60% of money to the table, and the city will match that up to 40%, up to a maximum of $2,500. They cannot be a current homeowner. This was intended more for new homeowners. But what we say is that you can't be a current homeowner, take advantage of this. As I mentioned, it's for featured neighborhoods that are south of 17th Avenue. So that would be College Grove, Southwest Perktown, Creekside, and Grace Arbor. Mostly, I think we've pretty much had only people that have taken advantage of it in College Grove, but we think that with some of these newer neighborhoods that are coming online that are also very, have some great housing stock that we'll be able to take advantage in those neighborhoods as well. One of the things is that they must remain in the home for at least five years. We really want people to invest back in our community and really become residents of the community. And then finally, they have to be a Reno County resident. So this is really where the change is requested for. So we are proposing a removal of the Reno County residency for applicants. The remaining qualifications would remain the same. This is because we have received a handful of requests from non-county residents, people who are living in Mays or maybe McPherson who want to move to Hutchinson. And we've told them, unfortunately, you can't take advantage of this program because you're not a Reno County resident. And staff and the Housing Commission believe that we should be encouraging new residents of people who live both in the county and out of the county to move to the city. And really, if we get people who move from out of the county, we're really now beginning to see a net increase in sales tax and things like that, instead of even people who might live in Reno County, but still do most of their shopping in Hutchinson. So if you're somebody who's, you know, moving here from Mays or McPherson, they're really going to be probably even adding more to the tax base than maybe even someone who's just moving here from Pretty Prairie or somebody like that. So that is what the Housing Commission is recommending. They did recommend unanimously to, for this. And staff is also recommending a motion to accept and approve of this and then sign the amended agreement with Interfaith Housing and Community Services. I don't have to answer any questions y'all might have.
No, I think it's great.
Yep.
Yeah, makes sense.
Awesome.
Yeah.
A motion.
Okay.
Second.
So is that a motion to accept and approve the recommendation of the Housing Commission to amend the program?
Yes.
Okay, are there further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Sorsa?
Yes.
Fire State for all.
Yes, next item, please. Thank you, Ryan.
Item 7B, consider proposed supplement number one to build grant contract with WSP.
Morning, Jeff.
Morning, Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. Last year, with the assistance of WSP USA, the city submitted a build grant application to the Department of Transportation for improvements to the Woody Seat Freeway, which includes the elimination of two bridges that are in need of, badly in need of work, either replacement or rehab services, and also improving the Woody Seat and Avenue A intersection with Roundabout as well as Adams and Avenue A with the Roundabout. Unfortunately, the city did not receive that grant last year, but John and I did participate in a debriefing from Department of Transportation officials, and they had indicated that our grant had completed or checked all the boxes what was needed for the grant, and it was thrown in essentially the bucket for potential funding of three applications from the city, from the state of Kansas last year, of which two of those got funded. So that was very positive, at least in our estimation, when we had talked to them at that point. So WSP prepared the build grant last year, so we requested a cost for updating the build grant for submittal this year. The proposed cost of the supplement to the original WSP contract approved last year is a not-to-exceed cost of $18,487.08. The funding for this work would be from the general engineering budget. And I do recommend if we want to try this opportunity again, that the City Council approve the supplement number one with WSP for not-to-exceed cost of $18,487.08.
So the $60,000 is what we paid him originally and then the $80,000?
No, we did not. We actually, it was a little, the original contract was $42,000, and it was about a little less than 40, it was right at 40,000 that we ended up paying for that. So it was an hourly cost too, so.
Okay. And then this is the $18,000 just for revisions of the previous one?
Correct. Updating it, they have to update the estimate as well as the benefit cost analysis. There's about, there's nine things that the, that the grant requests that we include, so.
What were some of the things that they said we needed to correct or, because?
Well, they didn't actually say anything they needed to correct. They just wanted more specific details or things that could be accountable to what it would improve. So how it relates to data, what safety or overall costs in the future, like maintenance costs in the future, if it would reduce and this would.
How are we considering the, one of the things where you've talked about the check marks around, it's supposed to create better accessibility? Where this project kind of takes away some accessibility?
Well, I don't see it as taking away accessibility, because right now, if we go off to the, to the east, semi trucks take up all the lanes just to turn the corner at Avenue A and Adams Street. So that's actually impeding accessibility for vehicles as well as crossing cars.
Is that the reason why you are adding the second roundabout instead of keeping that in?
That is one of the reasons. That is one of the proposals, yes.
Well, Jeff, this is a very controversy. I've spent my whole weekend talking to people that are calling me. They don't like this, mainly because it's shutting off B Street. Is there any other way we can do this? I mean, this is the only design that they're going to approve. There's no other design, right?
That or it would be reconstructing or replacing the existing bridges that are already there.
Now, if we accept this and we go with this, the money that we're going to put towards it, does that mean we have to go with this design? The money has to go for this design?
If we get awarded, yes.
Yeah, so we have to go with this design if we get awarded.
If we go forward with this.
Is there any way to keep the bridges but make the off ramps and on ramps better? To where we'd still fit into the build grant?
It would not, actually. It doesn't fit, fit the build grants requirements, because they want innovative accessibility. We have, we have more open spaces and it'd be more of a, kind of a pleasing entrance into the city there. Otherwise, essentially, we're, we're just redoing maintenance on what we actually have now.
Jeff, I was wondering if you might speak to a little bit of the flexibility within certain design elements, because I was under the impression that this particular design would be submitted, but we would have some opportunity for residents to have input into improvements in maybe adjacent roads or walkways. One of the biggest concerns that I heard voiced was that B Street is being taken by people who don't drive, right? So a lot of walkers, children, and, you know, elderly. So what opportunities exist for accessibility outside of that street once this is approved? Can you speak to?
I don't know if I know that. I don't know the full answer on that. There would probably be the opportunity to at least explore other options at that point. I don't know how that fits in with everything, but I do think there's going to be some, there will be some discussions as we go forward, maybe a public meeting or two also, and we could see if we can address those things as we move forward, since this is mainly just the concept going forward.
Well, and I did see, you know, we did have 17 letters of support for this, and one of those was from the Chief Officer of the Boys and Girls Club who uses that Avenue A building. And I think that's a, that's a large user of that walkway. So if, if he was on board with accessibility issues, I'm wondering like maybe, maybe that's not as big of an issue as people think, but it's the change that they're afraid of. I, I'm just trying to get a feel for that.
That's, that's interesting, because I, the letter, the email I got was concerned about the walkability from somebody who works at Boys and Girls Club. So obviously, the two haven't talked.
Right. If I could just add, you know, because we, we had the two public meetings over in that neighborhood, and Nancy, you were probably both of them. There was always this conversation about a concept, and the accessibility to Avenue A Park was a big deal. Accessibility on Avenue A down sidewalks is not. I mean, there's no accessibility there with, with the intersection at Adams.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
You can see some of the proposed trails we've got. So if you're on Avenue B, you're going to walk a block. You're going to walk a block or half a block north to access that, those sidewalks. And so I think it's important to understand that as we get into design, there's always, you guys are a part of that process. There's always room for improvements. As Jeff said, not to go back to the two bridges, because that's not what this program is all about. But, you know, from a, you know, we haven't spent any money on engineering. I mean, that's the difficult part of this. But, you know, the group that put it together, put the concepts together, because KDOT was part of helping us fund that portion of it.
And KDOT actually came up with it.
Yeah, and KDOT, when we started looking at options, came up with this concept for us to really look at. And the only thing I want to say is that I've talked about this project a lot in the community, at different civic groups, different, you know, radio interviews, and there's been a lot of support for it. And obviously, they're not here today. You probably didn't hear, hear from them. But I understand the concerns of those neighbors, I really do, because, John, Dave Line, you've been involved in highway projects and development, and there's always some difficult decisions that have to be made. And it's not easy. But when I look at this, I'm looking at this opportunity as we've got an overbuilt exchange, 62-year-old overbuilt exchange there, and it's really not even to modern day standards, the way the curves are set up. And it's a dangerous intersection. And so we've got an opportunity to, to improve that, or we go back to the way it is, and we'll talk about this in 62 years and figure out, man, I wish we had really looked into this a little bit further, because I think we can address some of the concerns that some of the neighbors have over in that area. You know, we met, Jeff and I met with the Coon Kraus, which is a big industry in our community, last few weeks ago with their executive team. And, and, you know, they were very supportive of the project with the only caveat that, that we figured out a way to, to improve the railroad track that goes over, is it Avenue F there? Anyway, it's, it's not Avenue F, but Avenue D, right in front of the building, and it is a, it's a tough one for their trucks. And so we're going to look at, you know, possibly doing that if we move forward on this project. So anyway, that's just my two cents. And I did want to comment back on, you know, Brian, or when we talked with DOT, they place all these grants across the country in four categories. There was highly recommended, recommended, acceptable, and not recommended. And of course, we are in the highly recommended. As Jeff said, there were two, three projects in Kansas, two got funded. And, I mean, I'm not a big betting man, but, but I'm betting that if this thing moved forward, we would have an opportunity for this, for this funding. And so with that, let's get back in, let you ask questions about design and Jeff, you might talk about?
I've got a couple of questions if I can. I guess from a, from a budgeting standpoint, my first question is, will the local match of the 20% be bonded? Is that our intent?
That is the intent.
It would be 100% bonded?
Correct.
And if?
And that would be whether we go with this or we do the other.
Okay, but let's assume that we go with, with what the proposal is. Secondly, if the application were approved by US Department of Transportation, when would the city need to actually budget this bond? The bond, for the bond proceeds in terms of what budget year?
It would probably be, well, toward, it would be probably 2021.
It would be in budget year 2021. Okay.
So the anticipated award date for this is what?
It would probably be late summer. Last year, we'd submitted in July and got notice about November 3rd, November 4th time period. So they moved it up this year. May 18th is the submittal period.
Right.
So I would assume that the award would be moved up a couple of months before that, so.
I reviewed, reviewed all your material, and certainly, we make a strong case for the need. I don't think there's any, any question in terms of the need to address this 62-year-old interchange. I've got a little different thought here that I want to have you all consider this morning. We know that this grant is very, very competitive and, and that we got some degree of consideration. But what I'm, what I'm wanting to put on the table here this morning is, is that to improve our position from a highly competitive standpoint, would it be worth our consideration of actually increasing the local match from 20% to 25%, which would give us a higher amount of leverage to the project? Which I've been involved in a lot of these different kinds of projects and understand what local match monies can do in terms of improving your position. If we were to improve it or to increase it to 25%, that would get us to about $2.175 million or an additional $435,000 of bonding. Now, if the, if the, the project is not approved, Jeff, you said to us that we're probably going to spend two, two and a half million dollars anyway to just upgrade to some minimal, minimal standards. So I'd like us all to consider actually increasing the local match in the application, as I've outlined, from 20 to 25% or about $435,000. That if we look back on it, wouldn't it be unfortunate that we say, gosh, if we would have, if we could have increased this 5%, our position, I think, would be enhanced considerably, so.
What was the match of the project that were accepted last year?
It was 20%, about $1.7 million is what?
$1.7 million, right, yeah.
You're talking about the other project?
Yeah, the other ones. The ones that were accepted over ours. What was their match?
Well, actually, as a, works considered a rural area, I don't know that all the percentages, but in reality, we don't have, we could actually submit for the whole thing. But, but most of them do submit a percentage, but I don't know exactly where that falls in with some of the other rural projects.
I think this is just too good an opportunity to walk away from a $9 million project when we could leverage an additional $435,000 over time in the bonding approach to the project.
And I, I think, I think you're right on target. I think the question is, you know, it's kind of playing with,
Sure it is.
You know, playing with that is, is if we talk to WSP as to whether that, I think we, we thought, based on download, that our 20% was a, was a strong match because of what Jeff said, that some didn't have to do any, or 10%. But it'd be interesting to see in the rural side. But without a doubt, that would, you know, you know, crop that, you know, push that up a little bit, without a doubt. So and as you said, we're going to spend, and I wanted to be clear on the, because we've talked about $2 million on the bridge replacement.
Yep, minimal.
That was no engineered design. That was a year ago. You know, we're two to three easy.
I know that you have some, I'm still going back to the design. You, I know there's some trees that are put up. With it being lower, instead of being higher above those houses, there's going to be more noise on those houses. So what are we doing to address the increase in noise pollution on those houses there?
That's a great question. And that's one that came up in the neighborhood meetings, and I'm going to let Jeff speak to the actual height of where that road is coming down, how it relates to the house. And the fact that we're moving the road further away from the houses because the road is narrowing as we get closer to the roundabout, so you might get through that.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, it's about Avenue B. It's about 20 feet high. From, from the preliminary analysis of those types of things, it's still going to be about 10 to 15 feet high in that, that range there. So it will be above at least the ground level at that point. Since we're moving the road down, we'll have more berm area on each side, so there's the opportunity. One of the ways that sound attenuation works is putting up vegetation or some type of buffer along there to minimize that. Another thing, since we're coming down toward the, the roundabouts, by slowing the traffic down a little bit more, the noise is less. And also, we're getting rid of the bridge where we actually have the approach slab where it meets the bridge. We get, we actually get sound complaints periodically of those locations where the, where the bridge and the approach slab meets, because there's always a joint. And so we have, in the winter, we have, it expands or contracts. And so we do get complaints about those things and have to go out and, the street department goes out and works on those periodically to try to make it a little quieter. But we do get complaints just for that. And there's the difference in, we have the joints and those types of things. We'll have a smoother paved surface, which will minimize the noise somewhat too. So there's some benefits of that too.
Yeah, I mean theoretically, the, the berm should absorb the sound as opposed to having things just drive over the top of a bridge. So can we talk a little bit about the trail and sidewalk opportunities along here that don't exist now for residents who want to walk, like say to the water park? So in this design, what would be available to kids who need to walk?
Well, on the, as you can see, on the, we have additional sidewalks, which we, it shows some down the alleys, also along the south and north side of the right of way. But, but as, if you go on the north side of the right of way, as you go, go to the east, there's not, you don't have to cross traffic till you actually get to Adams. So that's, I mean, I think that's a benefit.
Well, when I was looking at the design, it looked like it improved accessibility, but I was, am I misunderstanding that? Because there seems to be a real concern about that in the neighborhood, that it's reducing accessibility. Is, have we just not done a good enough job educating the neighborhood about that?
I don't, that, that may be some. Everybody's entitled to their own opinions on how it may or may not improve that. So I, I don't know, to that.
I think the, where the, you know, it depends on where you're at. I mean, from the school, if you're from the school, your, your access is improved immensely because of what Jeff just said. If you live, you know, on Avenue B, you got to walk a block to get to access that.
I see.
So how far is too far for people to, you know, have that access? And.
I think if you live on Avenue B, yeah, you're already going down Avenue B.
Yeah, if you live on this side, yeah. So, but as we get into design, because again, some of these pedestrian, you know, that they've shown on there probably aren't, some of those might not be feasible. I, I don't know crossing traffic, certain areas, but certainly on Avenue A, it's a pretty clear shot down to downtown. And that was one of our deals, connection to downtown, connection to, you know, the water park.
Actually, the park to the north, that's right over.
And the other thing we haven't talked about, of course, is the park that we just developed, the Southwest Perktown Park, that with this green space there that you see, you know, will totally enhance, you know, that opportunity. We did talk a lot about that at the public meetings and, you know, what, you know, what that space can become. And so a lot of that's going to take input from neighbors and communities as we get further into, you know, to design it, if we get to that point, so.
Well, I think this certainly represents a significant investment into an area that has been maybe neglected for a while. And I, I think all of this opportunity for people to provide their input recently has opened our eyes to other, other areas that need to be addressed, like C Street. I got an email today, and I spoke with someone last night as well about C Street needing improvements. Could all of that be fit into this particular project?
We, it may or may not. I think Avenue C, as you, as you talked about, we talked about that. It's just a slurry seal. It's not very widely used, but I think it's an opportunity for us to, you know, we're not going to put a curb and gutter there, but at least improve that road, not only for pedestrians, but also for, you know, vehicles, if that's, that's something that probably wouldn't be a very significant cost.
Do we have to have the second one?
Yeah, John and I discussed that yesterday.
We've talked about that before.
We may not even do a second roundabout. Is that correct?
Well, it, it, yeah, go ahead. Well, part of it is, is the distance between Woody Seat and Avenue A. It's fairly short, so it's more stacking.
Stacking, geometric stacking.
Those types of issues, if we have a semi or a large truck, it would back up to where we potentially could impact the first roundabout.
I see, okay. Can, John, Dave Line talked a little bit about this, but you keep throwing out this $3 million if we were to go with the status quo, but isn't that really just for basic maintenance? I mean, if we were to replace those bridges, wouldn't it be closer to like?
There's, there's a potential of replacing the bridges. We haven't did a, a good evaluation of the bridges at this point, at least at Avenue B and Avenue A. Avenue C is also one that we're going to have to be looking at also, so.
Yeah.
So it could, it could go higher, but I don't have a good cost at this point.
We're looking at a savings of a minimum of $1 million versus replacement, and then plus the long-term maintenance of bridges, which as we know is costly. I just, I just question our ability as a city to continue to support all of this infrastructure.
Five bridges between the Ark Kansas River and what we have now at the interchange at Woody Seat and Avenue A, so.
Yeah. And I don't think most of us realize that there are that many.
Right.
You know, until you actually go looking at them.
But that second roundabout, that was always kind of an interesting thought.
I'm just not a big fan of roundabouts. I've done a lot of driving through Missouri and through Springfield and other places that have a lot of them, and I'm just not a big fan of them.
And I get that. And I think people are getting more comfortable with roundabouts now, and we see them on highways now that you didn't ever see, and it's, it's a safety. So I'm not stopping and looking and pulling out in front of somebody. It's a, traffic's moving, and they're, they're working very well. This one, you know, we would have it, you know, widen up, it could allow for trucks, and so there's plenty of room. It's not going to be really, you know, you know, like the one at Severance and Point 3rd is a pretty tight, you know, tight roundabout, but it's primarily for vehicle, car traffic. But so it, you know, the other thing that I didn't mention too, and we talked about at the public meetings, is the aesthetic values you come in Hutch right now, and that's really one of our main entrances. It's not very pretty, and it's not ever going to be very pretty, and until we paint our water tower, I guess. But it's really an opportunity to really kind of step that. But it's really an opportunity to really kind of step that whole thing up with some.
How much did the walking bridge off Thirtieth cost to build?
Well, that, that was an interesting.
Million dollars, wasn't it?
It's about a million dollars.
Yeah, a million dollars. KDOT paid for it.
KDOT paid for it. The only thing the city paid for was the enhanced look, you know, the brick facade and some of the, and that was about a hundred grand. So we, and that turned out to be.
Where does the level of the road level off to where maybe it would still be too high to put a walking bridge over B Street then, if we added it in to the KDOT? I said it'd be cool to have a walking bridge, they said welcome to Hutchinson on it as you come down. Yeah, over.
Yeah, because if we put it at Avenue B, it'd have to be about forty feet tall.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who would want to climb that? You can't see the grade on this picture, you know, I don't, I can't have a full visual of it.
I could show the grade, but I don't know that it means much to.
To non-inventors.
It depends on scale and a whole bunch of things that I can't.
Well, Jeff, I, I did have one other question that was brought up, speaking of grade, having those big trucks go by at a lower level enhances safety or worsens safety?
I don't think it, I don't think, I don't, I don't think it impacts safety.
At all, okay. That, that was a concern that was brought up.
Other than speed, which they'll be going slower because it is a single lane roundabout. So right now, as we come out of the roundabout, things kind of go to two lanes, and the speed will be a little bit slower so we, because they need to navigate the roundabouts also, so.
And if we were approved and we, and we got this grant and we bonded it, how long do you think that would take for construction? Like how long would that be?
Potentially, it's, I think they have to, they have twenty-eight to thirty months total.
Oh, wow. Would it be closed the whole time?
It would be closed, and it would be quiet, well, it wouldn't be quiet during construction, but it'll be, it would be closed during the construction period.
How would we route, just route people out of South Hutch across the heart?
It would be, well, that or they could, we could maybe stop them at Avenue F.
Okay, I mean, that's where I'd get off anyway.
In conjunction with that, we will have to do a project, or maintenance project, south of this project on the surfacing and things like that to match in. That portion is not included in this grant.
Let's say, so let's say we, I'm still hesitant. I understand the need because of the maintenance. What is our yearly maintenance cost on the bridges?
Right, we actually, we haven't done very well in the past.
I was going to say, we haven't maintained any yet for quite a while.
If we do maintenance, it's typically major maintenance. The last project that we actually did was the Airport Road Bridge, and that came in about one point one million, but by the time we were done, I think it was like one point seven million because there was so much more infrastructure we had to repair as we were going through that, so. That was the county bridge we got. But that was the last one we had to work on.
Yeah, I don't know. Like I, I really, I understand the need for it. I don't like roundabouts though. I've always been like, where's my third option? Like why does it have to be one way or the other? Like I constantly ask for, you know, could we have regular lights? Could we just have the off-ramp? Some kind of third option to talk about?
Off-ramps are, we just don't have enough space for off-ramps earlier. As you can see, they're placed about as close as they can to all the areas right now, so.
It's a hard decision for me.
One of the other things we, and Jeff probably shouldn't even bring this up.
Are we going to fix some of the roads around there? I'm sorry. Like we've put all this millions of in and then, are we going to fix up some of the other roads? Are we going to fix up Avenue B? Are we going to fix up?
Well, Avenue B is actually a fair.
Pretty good.
What about C, isn't that, is that still dirt down there?
It's still dirt, but.
That's what we talked about, trying to do some, some of our own improvements to, to make that a little easier access. But there was one comment, I think in the public meetings, we talked about, and I hesitate to bring it up, but it was a, you know, pedestrian underpass, not an overpass, because that's totally out because ADA and all that. I, I don't know that we have the height and have no idea what that cost would be, but just something to throw out there that we could at least, you know, look at that opportunity. Can't guarantee that, but that would.
I think of a place for people to sell drugs, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I like that.
I just don't like the underpass idea, sorry.
I, I just was throwing that out there.
I'm just going to be frank.
There are safety issues, and I'm not sure if it can be done, you know, construction-wise.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would rather put the money into improving C and putting in sidewalks on C so that people could walk that route. I mean, I did drive it this morning, and it's marginal. But if we at least got sidewalks in through there, it would be helpful.
Well, and you know, regardless of, well, let's, let's say that we approve this, we get the grant. I think it's going to be critical that we really reach out to those residents for any kind of input on design or flexibility or their needs. Because I know that that was done, but some people in that area feel like it wasn't done to an extent that includes them. And so I just think it's really important that we, we hear those voices. I still think it's a great project, and it's a real enormous missed opportunity of long-term financial savings if we, if we don't do it. These are the types of things we need to look at, you know, instead of always going with the status quo, being, being more innovative and thinking of ways to do things that, long-term, will, will hold that taxpayer bill down, you know. It's, bridges are so darn pricey.
Yeah.
We just can't afford to keep.
Look at the county's experience.
Oh, goodness, yeah.
Well, I think our task at hand this morning is to make a formal decision on submitting the revised grant application, and the strongest grant application, and I hope you all will consider, and I hope we will confer with WSP to get their input, but to highly recommend that we do increase that, that grant match to twenty-five percent. I, I just would, would hate to look back and say, we missed this opportunity because we weren't as competitive as we could have been.
I don't have any problem with that.
I think that's a good point.
I think all the, the discussions in terms of the design and so on can come at a point once we are awarded the grant, and I think that's, that's our objective, is let's get the grant first.
Yeah, and, and to your point on, on meetings, and, you know, we, we've learned through some of these Main Street projects how important it is to bring shop owners in and residents into a meeting, tell them what's happening, and then keep them updated throughout the process. Because this will be a major disruption to not only that neighborhood, but to Hutchinson. There's no doubt about it, but you know, you, it's hard not to do that on a project like this with the amount of traffic that comes over that every day, so.
Yeah. Is there any consensus for increasing the local match?
I can live with it.
You know my position.
Is there a motion on the table that somebody wants to make?
Well, I would move to approve, as is provided here, I would move to approve the proposed supplement number one to the contract with WSP USAE in the amount not to exceed an additional eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eight cents. Additionally, to recommend we increase the local match from twenty percent to twenty-five percent, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract to continue working on the grant submission. So this does not actually approve this particular design, but just the grant submission. Are there further questions or comments?
My comment is I'm against it completely. I've been to a lot and a lot of meetings these last couple of months. We don't live there, they live there. And it's going to disrupt their living in that area. And I'm not even for the concept of even taking it to the KDOT, even spending more money. So even, that's my view. I've been to a lot of meetings, I get involved, and I haven't heard nobody for it in the south end of town.
John, did you want to make any comments about some of the letters of support we got for it?
Well, you know, as part of the grant application, we're required to get letters of support, you know, for your, for your grant. And I left my lane over there, but I, I don't remember, we had, we had a lot of.
There's a list of seventeen I have there.
And in talking with our grant people, expertise and even DOT, letters of support are a very important part of this. And of course, we've got them from the school system, from the county, you know, South Hutch, a lot of our partners, KDOT, Representative Post, Marshall, just, you know, a pretty, Chamber Rec. So there's a lot of interest here. And, and one of the things that we're going to learn this time, we didn't last time, was to reach out by phone, by voice to our congressional people and have them make phone calls as opposed to just getting the letter. So, and I, and we'll have to do the same thing. We'll have to get, you know, more letters of support for this next round, probably some of the same people, but, you know, and, and some of these letters of support weren't written just because we told them to write the letter. They were a part of meetings where they heard us talking, you know, about, about the project, so. And, and really, that, those letters of support are really from a community-wide perspective. And we have forty-some thousand people in Hutchinson, and I think those letters represent that group and not necessarily, you know, the, the neighbors. And as I said earlier, anytime we've got projects going on, there's always, you know, going to be somebody that's impacted. And hopefully, we can do a really good job of bringing them into the project, into the conceptual design, and alleviate, you know, some of the concerns that, that they might have. And I don't want to sound like a politician promising things, but I can tell you from experience that that will be a big part of this effort to involve that neighborhood and other community members in that planning process.
Thank you. Yeah, it certainly does affect everyone, especially on the South Hutch side as well, not just, just that one neighborhood, but. Are there other comments or questions before roll call?
I always, I want a third option. I don't like roundabouts. I wish that we could have some way to have maybe traditional intersections, or, I mean, does it have to be that way with the roundabouts?
The only thing I can address that is that as we get into design, you know, I, I think there's a lot of opportunities and, and, you know, obviously, the goal here is to eliminate two bridges, the roundabout, is Adams potentially a different configuration. I think that, to me, is still on the table. Although, you know, that was part of the, you know, the application was that we were going to improve safety at that intersection. If there's another way to do it via traffic light, so be it. But I, I don't know that that's possible, but, you know, this hasn't been put on paper for, you know, formal design. So the only thing I would say there is that there's opportunities to, to look at that, but I don't want to lead you on that, you know, you know, we can get rid of the one and have traffic lights, but we're going to end up with what Jeff talked about, you know, with traffic backing up potentially, so.
I know, there's already traffic that backs up onto the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Well, we have a motion in a second to approve the contract. Can you please call the roll, Linda?
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solmer?
Yes.
Bagwell?
No.
Dorza?
No.
Iris DeCarolla?
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven, safe, consider property acquisition for Cow Creek channel expansion.
As we've talked before, oh, Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. As we've talked before, the Cow Creek channel expansion is one of the building blocks of future projects to improve the stormwater conveyance system in the city of Hutchinson. And it was identified in our stormwater master plan that was completed in 2017. The city has been in the process of acquiring properties of, of late for that area that is bounded by Plum Street on, on the west side, from Avenue D to Avenue G between the railroad, the two railroads that are located in that area. The city's consultant negotiated and presented agreement today to council to consider. The total cost of the purchase is three hundred and seventy thousand with a hundred thousand dollar down payment, when, happening now, and the remaining costs would be paid at, at the time when the city takes possession. So I do recommend that we move forward and approve this purchase contract. This is the largest property that we needed to acquire for this project, so. The other, the other properties have been acquired. I think there's just one property left that we need to acquire in this area at this point, so.
Jeff, just a question, as I look at that photo there, there are two or three physical structures there.
Correct.
I guess my question is, is that what would be our intent? Is there any salvage value and to really take a hard look at, at any salvage value that we can recapture some of, of the cost of the acquisition?
I haven't really, I have not really entertained that idea at this point. I know that the main building, of course, the biggest building on that, is, is brick. So I don't know that there's any salvageability on that one. The metal buildings may have that opportunity. I don't know, depending on their condition, so I have not physically been on site there, so.
How can that be approached with ourselves internally, or with our consultants, or the general contractor, or how, how does that all might work?
I would think, as we go through the demo portion, we could kind of consult, be consulting with our consultant as well as the demo contractor moving forward.
I mean, I know sometimes, you know, on the surface, it's, it sounds like a good idea, but when you get into the actual demo and so on, it's counterproductive.
There might be some benefit to try to do.
But I'd sure encourage us to, to take a look at, if there is any salvage value to recapture some of our, in cost here.
Right. Okay, point taken.
Further questions or a motion on this item?
I will move to approve the real estate purchase contract and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solmer?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Dorza?
Yes.
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight, report to city officials.
Sarah, let's begin with you today.
I, I don't have anything to report, other than everybody stay safe, wash your hands, social distancing. I just want to thank everybody at the hospitals, everybody, all the nurses at the nursing homes that are keeping our elderly safe, and just giving a thanks to all of our people working every day on the front lines, whether you're a clerk at the grocery store, to a nurse, to a physical therapist, the people going to people's homes because of medical needs. So just wanted to thank everybody.
Yeah, very well put. Steve, do you have anything?
Yes, I like, we're in a desperate situation right now. And all we don't, we, we, we don't agree with everything, that's okay. And just pray for each other and hope that we get through all this. We will. And I say a prayer for all of us every night, so we just work together and get along.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. John?
Well, as it's been said many, many times over the media throughout this last month or so, three, three items, stay strong, stay healthy, and stay at home.
Yes, right. You've been watching Governor Cuomo's press conferences, I can tell. Yeah, now that's bad when that's your highlight of the day.
What else do we have to do, right?
You're up, Nancy.
I, I, nothing. Everybody's already said what I think we all think and feel.
Absolutely. Well, I'm not real sure where to begin. John and I have been speaking a lot in the last several days. This is, this crisis is really going to affect the city in a lot of ways, especially budgetarily, on the revenue projection side. And he's been putting together with Angela what that might look for, look like for our budget. And I wanted, wanted him and, and also Angela to, to talk a little bit about that, and then I'll go over some other items, so.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Council, of course, since this crisis has all hit us for the past, what, three weeks really for us, we've been really looking at a lot of things, and really focused on the financial impact this COVID-19 crisis is going to have on our, our budget. And the obvious impact for us is, of course, sales tax. You know, sales tax represents thirty-three percent of our general fund revenue, followed by property tax at thirty-three percent. And so our receipts actually lagged by two months, and so we haven't felt the impact yet. We're going to start seeing that in May and probably more in June. And, and so we, we know there's going to be impact. The question is how big of impact is that going to have on us? And can we absorb that without making any changes in our operations? And so Angela and I have been looking at this, and Angela's done some good work. And what, what we first looked at was the impact of sales tax we had in two oh eight oh nine as a result of the recession, we all remember that. And we saw a decrease in, in revenue then of about five percent of, of sales tax. And, and that was a fairly long period of time. And so, you know, we've looked at this, and Angela's talked to finance officers across the country. I've looked at what other cities have been talking about. And some are saying that this will be twice, if not three times, as bad as oh eight oh nine recession. And so we prepared some information that shows a reduction in our revenue at seven and a half percent, at fifteen percent, as it affects our sales taxes, it affects franchise fees, and then we'll have a small decline in building permit fees that we see in some concession revenue and what have you. But the big hit for us is going to be sales tax. And it's, it's not will it, it's kind of when it's going to impact us. And as I said earlier, we see that happening in probably May and June because of the lag in sales tax receipts for us. So it's going to be worse than an oh eight oh nine recession. But the question is that we're hearing from experts and that it's probably, it may not be as long of an effect as the oh eight oh nine recession. And so, so what we want to talk to you today about is a couple of handouts I've got in front of you. The first one is the general fund summary. And based on our projections, take a look at, at how that's going to affect us from a revenue side, and then, you know, start talking about our target, and then start talking about. And then, uh, uh, you know, start talking about our target, and then start talking about, uh, you know, opportunity or options we have to, to address some of this. So I'm gonna have Angela Richards, our finance director, come up and just kind of walk you through that general fund summary, um, so you can kind of see what we're talking about there, and then we'll talk more.
Excuse me, Mayor, are we in executive session?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
No, no.
Okay.
We, yeah, Steve, uh, I thought we needed to discuss some of this publicly.
Yeah, this, this, we're, this is really just gonna be kind of a high-level overview, and then we're gonna get into some other stuff, yeah.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. So, I'm going to explain the general fund summary page that you have before you. We ended 2019 with a, a cash balance of just under 5.6 million. And so that's higher than what we had budgeted. We had thought that maybe we would end the year around 4.7, um, when we looked at the 2020 budget. Um, so we started the 2020 year with a higher cash balance, but you're project, we're projecting a decrease in sales tax of about 1.1 million. And then I went ahead and decreased franchise fees because we know those will decrease. We decreased refuse rates. So that means the franchise fee that we get from that is going to go down, as well as Westar is giving merger and savings credits to customers. So that is affecting our electricity franchise fee. So that's about 200,000. We'll see some, um, reduction in expenditures based on the sales tax, because we collect less sales tax, we'll pass on less sales tax to the Cosmosphere and Stratica, and we'll also transfer less to our street reserves. Um, so that's the decrease of 195,000 that you see in expenditures. We've projected everything else for expenditures to stay the same. Maybe that won't be the case because we'll have some vacancies. Um, but if we do that, we project our ending cash balance to be 3.9 million. Um, in comparison, at the end of 2017, we had a cash balance of 4.1 million. So it's taken us that long to get back up to where we wanted to be for our general fund, um, fund balance policy of about 5.2 to 5.5 million.
What year was that, 2014?
2017.
2017, okay.
So it took 17, 18, and 19 to get to back up. Um, so that's what our projection looks like. And the discussion we'll need to have is where are we comfortable with that number being?
Was that with the 15% reduction or 7.5?
That's the 15%.
That's the 15%.
And as disclaimer, we're, um, projecting our compensating use tax to remain constant. Other cities are doing likewise. Um, some are even saying they might go up, but we don't want to rely on that.
Mm-hmm.
So it, do you consider, and I know this, you don't have a crystal ball, but that 15%, do you consider that the worst-case scenario? Or the 20 to 30 that we keep hearing, is that a possibility?
Uh, so if we look back at, uh, 2008 to 2009, um, and use that as guidance, I think, as double that as guidance, this would be that number. And the GFOA is saying to budget for double, but what they're suggesting is that you take a tiered phase to this. Like, so we want to cut expenditures in this area first, wait a while, see what happens, and then, and then reevaluate and see if we need to go on to phase two of cutting expenditures to match. So they're, they're saying to use up to two times that, uh, decrease in 08 to 09 as a plan.
And that 08, '09 was much more sustained, as you, as you mentioned, John, so...
Longer period, yeah.
Not that we have any assurance that this won't go longer than we all hope, so.
Okay.
So just to summarize, this is really just a high-level overview, um, and really want the council to be thinking about your comfort level on fund balance. And, you know, i- it's really thinking back on how many years I've been doing this. I've talked about the importance of fund balances and just for bond ratings, but it's to help you in times where, you know, revenues don't come in as you expected. And, you know, we preach that, you guys know that every year. And so, you know, it's not that we have to recover everything, but that fund balance is there to help through some of this. But I think it can only help us through a very small part of this, because we want to ensure coming out of this that in next year's budget and the year after, that there's still a, a fairly strong fund balance. And so, um, just want you to know that we're gonna be working over the next, uh, few days on some, some, some plans and ideas on how we can reduce our expenses, um, uh, in a tiered approach and see how this unfolds. Because, you know, right now, our revenue's coming in, in fact, I've heard, you know, March revenue, uh, is probably gonna be stronger because everybody's buying everything up at the grocery stores, but, but that's gonna fall. And, uh, so we'll, we'll just have to see. And I don't think there's any question about, you know, when, it's just how much is it, it, it gonna, gonna drop? So, that's really was the point of this conversation, and we can, we'll be getting back with you and probably may, may request a special meeting to kind of review some of the thoughts and ideas that we're gonna have, um, before we do anything, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and, you know, I, I certainly think that none of us want to exhaust our reserves that took a long time to build up, but I think it's also important to remember that that's exactly why you have strong reserves, like you mentioned, to get you through crises. We don't have millions of dollars sitting there for the sake of having that there. We have it there to support our operations when, um, when we get into a, a tough time like this. Um, a few other items, John, um, we talked a little bit about some of the grant funding available to cities for, um... So there was a Department of Justice, uh, Bureau of Justice Assistance, um, coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. Have we tapped into any of that, or do you think we will? Um, and do you have any information about, uh, what's going to be available from the federal CARES Act to cities?
We, we've got, yeah, we've got, been hit just everywhere you turn around, they're throwing some of these grant programs at us. And, you know, for example, the, uh, the emergency supplemental funding, um, I think we're allocated to receive potentially $71,000 from that. Uh, but it's all related to the COVID virus response. And so we're, we've been tracking since the beginning of this, you know, fire, extra fire, you know, police, and mainly so far, supplies. I mean, we're not seeing just a whole lot of overtime, uh, because of this, but, but it's mainly supplies. And some of these talk about, you know, lost wages and things like that. Well, we haven't really gotten into anything like that. So, um, we're on top of that. I think the application deadline for that is, for that particular one was, uh, May 28. The stimulus bill, um, I was looking through that last night, trying to figure out our piece, and I have found our piece. And it's a matter of, of, of how that's gonna be distributed to the local, localities.
Statewide.
And really what that's for. Um, you know, this isn't the, um, bill, uh, this isn't a capital improvement stimulus bill for us yet. I think that's probably something that we're talking about down the road. This is more for response and, you know, uh, to, to the COVID-19 and how we're handling that, so. Um, so we'll be looking at all that as it comes through, and, um, it's starting to settle down a little bit, but there for a while, you know, there's all these opportunities out there. And, and that's great, but, you know, $70,000 in the scheme of things isn't gonna do us a lot, other than if we can get reimbursed for some supplies that we purchased extra and things like that. We'll certainly do that. And the county, uh, they would qualify, I think, under that for about 58,000. So it, it's a little bit, um, a little bit to help. But I, I don't think there's gonna be any magic bullet for local units of governments, as hopefully there are for some of the smaller businesses that are gonna see some, some relief out of this, so.
Well, I was emailing back and forth with, um, another city manager yesterday and this morning, and, um, unfortunately, experiencing some illness throughout their staff. I think we've been very lucky, and I know that you've been really proactive in taking precautions to keep, um, the employees safe. So, wanted to express appreciation for that. And I didn't know if you wanted to go over any, any of those things, or...
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Just to know that, you know, we're, like everybody else, we've looked at what we can do to... You know, we've got a very limited number of people that can work from home, but those that can, they are. Um, been very proud of our department heads, all of them, for coming up, particularly on the Public Works and Parkside with flex scheduling. And the idea there is to keep our work groups small, to where they're not all interacting with each other. For example, in Public Works, we're working, you know, three twelves now, um, uh, to, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, just to split them up. So you'll see them out on Saturday, uh, probably starting, uh, this week. And so, um, so that's some of the things we're doing the best we can, um, to kind of separate our employees. And, you know, obviously, one, you know, contagious virus would, would come through our, our troops pretty quickly. And, uh, of course, police and fire are pretty much, uh, businesses as usual, so.
Yeah. I know they've put in a tiered protocol according to, um, the spread and, and are only answering certain types of calls. So, really, again, uh, reiterate what you said about your department heads doing, doing a great job to keep their people safe. Um... Been getting a lot of questions to the city about essential functions. I don't know if anybody else is taking those calls. Um, people saying, oh, you know, this business shouldn't be open, or is it okay for my business to be open? Um, just wanted to remind people to refer them to RenoGov.org. That is the Reno County site, and you can click on their COVID page and see 1-800 number to, to call the Health Department, and Health Officer Nick Baldetti and, and his staff can, can help with those questions. Um, and the last thing I wanted to say before, um, handing it over to John is, um, happy Easter to everyone. I know it's going to look very different this year, um, but encourage everybody to stay home and, and stay safe. We do know that three of the clusters, um, in Kansas have been related to, uh, to church gatherings. So, uh, there's a lot of churches that have been innovative in showing their, their broadcast on Sunday, um, online. So encourage you to stay home and stay safe and have a wonderful Easter. And, John, what else do you have?
Madam Mayor, that's really all I had, but just to talk about the budget, uh, issues and just a little bit about what we're doing as an organization. And these are, these are really interesting times and, and that, that we're going through. And, you know, everybody's working together, and our organization's been very strong on that. And so, uh, um, if you have questions, make sure you get them to me. It's, you know, the communication piece has changed a little bit. Um, but, um, I think people are learning new ways of having meetings. And, uh, it's pretty quiet here in City Hall right now, so. That's all I had.
Yeah.
I would request the executive session, too.
How long do you think that that is going to take?
Probably, let, let's say till 11:00, take a five-minute break or...
Okay. Somebody want a motion?
I'm motion.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, Steve's got a motion to recess into the executive session pursuant to the personal matters of non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-4319B1, in order to discuss workforce needs. The open meeting to resume at 11:00 AM. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes.